We're gonna make an addition. We're gonna add item 12A, A fiscal update, first 10 day attendance. So can I get a motion to... Can I make a motion to add that to the agenda?
You can make a motion. I'll second.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda. Can I get a second?
What is it called again?
We're gonna add item 12AA fiscal update, first 10 day attendance.
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So can I get approval of the agenda as amended?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any public comment? Okay, we're gonna convene to close session.
We've got a reconvening to open session. No public comment? So, there's no, a 4A report of action taken in closed session, no action was taken. We've got a 4B flag salute with Lilly and Avi from La Fiesta.
Put your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Five presentations, UELF, fifth grade outdoor education, and Noah presentation.
So, Principal Christina Lundee is going to be presenting on a program, outdoor education for fifth grade. This is a life-changing opportunity for our students. When I was a principal, our student, our fifth grade students went on a trip. So, she's going to be explaining the details of that trip and what we're doing to prepare our students and some fundraising we're doing.
Hi, back-to-back. All right, welcome. It's nice to see all of you, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm going to open up the presentation. Didn't my kids do a great job? I'm very proud of them. I was too busy giving them kudos. All right, let's begin this. All right. So, thank you board for having me tonight. Thank you audience for being here this evening. So, I'm excited to share with you about our fifth grade outdoor education project that started with the Noah grant. So, I'm excited to share with you about our fifth grade outdoor education project that started with the Noah grant. And so, tonight, our goal is to share with you how it aligns with the work that we're doing here in Kattai-Ronard Park, to also share the process of what we're doing and how we're engaging the students and our staff in this process, and also to highlight the program. The slide deck is really a resource for you to have over time so that you're aware of what the program has. So, I'm going to be showing images on the slide deck, but it's really meant for you to have as a resource so that if and when you get to talk with community members about it, when questions come up, you have a place of, oh, where can I go find that information? And it's all there. And should you get to come across one of our fifth graders and talk with them about it, maybe they're excited, maybe they're nervous, then you can go, oh, I saw a picture of that dorm room. Oh, I saw the adventure that you'll be going on. That's the purpose of tonight. My principal colleagues and I thought it would be important for the board to be aware of what this program is. And with everything that we do, we really like to have it aligned with our ALCAP goals. This makes sure that everything that we're doing in our classrooms, everything that we're doing on our sites, every conversation we're having with our parents aligns with the goals of where we want our district to be moving and how we add what we call our plus-one. What are we doing each day, that's our plus-one. So, here's my favorite slide. We're going to be having, in three weeks, every fifth grader is going to be going to Nature Bridge, and they'll be able to talk to each other. So, the goal is that they run into each other and they're like, oh, we're going January 23rd. Oh, we're going February 8th. So, that as a community, every fifth grader is able to share that this is the trip that they're going on, that it's a shared experience, that they'll be able to speak to it, that they'll be able to build their future with it. By going in January and February, our fifth grade teachers will be able to also bond and have their classes bond in a way that really prepares them for six months later when they're in middle school. And we all know middle school's a big shift. And so, the stronger that you know that the person sitting next to you has your back, that the person next to you has a shared memory with you, that you're able to go, I can breathe in your presence because you helped me or I helped you up that hill to be able to see the view of the Golden Gate Bridge. That's the purpose of that slide. And that's how our fifth grade teachers and our principals are introducing this to the kids. Today, I had the honor of sharing this with our fifth graders in their classroom and sharing, look at, how many of you have friends at Richard Crane? How many of you have friends at TPA? And for them to, they all raised their hands at different times. That fifth grade friend of yours is doing the same adventure with you. There's lots of research that supports, which is why we have outdoor education in other grades in our districts. But really, outdoor education is something that can be done across the board with our different grades. And so, this is exciting to bring it to our fifth graders as they're about to take their step onto middle school. This is where they'll be. They're going to be able to go on hikes. Some of them will go on the lighthouse tour. Some of them will hike up to Hawk Hill to see the Golden Gate Bridge. If they're lucky, someone might go down all the way to Tennessee Valley. They'll all get to explore in some way that ecosystem. And that's the focus. They're part of a national seashore. They are able to geographically develop a schema in their brain that places them somewhere that is significant to our global world. Golden Gate Bridge is on everything. And our kids will have that connection of, oh, the Golden Gate Bridge, the Pacific Ocean, where the headlands, this is a geological goldmine for geologists who go to this area. This is the favorite slide of our students and our parents. The kids today gasp when they thought, 6:45 in the morning, they get up. They'll have the early or late breakfast. So, as you could see, it's a schedule that's, the kids fall into this routine. They get into camp mode. The best part is that the lights do go out at 9:15. One of the field science teachers will come through the dorm, share a story, maybe play a song, maybe both, and settle them in. Yes, there's some rustling on the first night, but they settle in because the lights do go out. There are heaters, you'll be warm. And the bathrooms are right there, plus it's locked up. So, this is just an idea of what the day will look like. They are out in the field. They are out exploring from nine in the morning until four in the afternoon, the whole time. They're holding their own stuff. They're filling up their own water bottle. They are exploring. They're struggling. They're working with each other. It's a full day. So, they'll get a full day on that middle day, and they'll have partial days on their first and their third day. They're thinking like scientists when they're out there. It's a very, it's aligned with our NGSS standards, along with the history social science. This location has layers of history that's there. And the field science teachers have a nice way of being able to pull those layers through the sciences so that students are able to explore it. We always go with the strength of the field science teacher because when that field science teacher feels that passion of what they're teaching, then the students feel that energy as well. All the work is done through science practices, so they'll be enhancing what they need to be doing as a scientist. This is going to support them as they're addressing any science assessments that come their way because in order to answer and respond scientifically, you have to learn how to think like a scientist. So, all of our students will be provided with a journal. They'll be provided with the practices of key observations and really asking each other the questions. When they go to Nature Bridge, there's a marine lab that's there. There's a taxidermy room. The Marine Mammal Center is close by. Some of the groups might get to do that. They all have different experiences. It depends on where the focus is. Or they might go to the Nike Missile Silos site, that's right there as well. Just depends what that group experiences, which makes it unique. So, like Lilly and Avi might have two different groups, and then they'll be able to share that during their free choice time. But this is the key part as well. It's the personal growth and team building that happens. So, when we say they go hiking, yes, they go hiking and. So, you take a mile, and then you stop and you do a game together that's problem-solving. You hike another mile, and maybe you're observing the different ecological feature that's there. You hike another two miles, and it's another physical challenge or team bonding challenge. And the whole day gets broken up in that way. This is the key of why it's so valuable to go earlier in the year, which is why mid-winter works for us because it gives us six more months with the kids to be able to take advantage of the relationships that are built. That really supports the social-emotional learning that we're addressing in our district because that social-emotional learning is woven in throughout every aspect. These field science teachers are experts. They know exactly what they're doing. They're open to feedback from the teacher that's working with them, and they're open to what do we want as a district to be able to address the needs when we're out there. They have been doing this, they're pros. When I say that, I'm not saying it lightly. I'm saying it because they love what they're doing. When they're out there, they have a passion for it. You just want to hang out and spend time with them. I always, I always want to stay there. I don't want to come back. I just want to keep being a field science teacher. So, in my next career, I might be a field science teacher, along with being a barista. They go together well. They go together well. So, we will, in the classrooms, we are presently preparing our students with their packing lists, with what their dorms look like, with the delicious food they will get to have. And that's a big part of it. Those are those three things that the, in the classroom, I was spending time talking today with them. What do I pack? What does it look like? And the food is a big deal. They work well with allergies. They work well with making sure that if you have, I haven't seen a kid not eat. I have seen a kid eat mostly carbs the whole time, but he still ate, and it was good hearty multi-grain carbs. So, but I haven't seen anyone not eat. And I'm really thinking of one kid in the eight years that I took kids there, so. So, what we're doing as a community, this is part of the Noah grant that you heard about back in June. So, this was one aspect of it, was that over the next three years, we would get all the fifth grade students out there. There are funds that are going towards it to help us kick-start it so that we can build systematic ways to fundraise for these trips in our future. It's also supporting us with transportation. We're also making sure and educating along the way constantly with our staff, with our families. We've had multiple information nights. We are continuing to have information nights. We had a whole seven elementary school dine and donate at Sally Tomatoes with their partnership where it was us able to share information about the night, plus the community to come together. And we're planning more. They are eager to have us do more there. Our big excitement is we're also, we were offered the position to have all the carnival games at the Ronard Park City Halloween and Aldea de los Muertos carnival. So, we have started, we're pulling the best games that all of our PTA sheds have of our games, and we're pulling them together. So, we are tackling that. We get to also sell the non-alcoholic beverages. Teresa Raffoni is on it, and she's getting so many beverages donated. So, we're just working together as we're doing our day jobs and supporting our students and working with our staff of how do we make this accessible to our kids. So, our next steps is to continue to inform the community. It's also being able to work with our staff. We're really prompting with our staff to come to us. I've had multiple call-on-the-phone FaceTimes with different fifth grade teachers and their principal to just address questions as we've had it. And our teachers, the fifth grade teachers are also all getting the John Muir's Laws Nature Journaling book that really goes into nature journaling to support their efforts and to recognize that we know this takes time and effort. But we're really looking at how to do this systematically. And so, there are a lot of questions that come with that. How can we support this as a district? This is just our first steps. And how can, and I would love, if it was up to me, we would be taking kindergarteners to outdoor ed. So, be careful what we ask for because I will find a way. It could start with third graders camping in the field out in their backyards. Wouldn't that be fun? Wouldn't that be fun? I think that'd be a great time. So, I am here to address any questions that you may have, but I really just wanted you to have a resource that you could use as you talk in our community about this adventure.
So, will we be asking families to contribute at all? Or will it be 100% paid for by the fundraiser?
It is not 100% paid for. We're actually asking for a donation, but it's a donation only because we cannot ask. It's a public school. Every kid is going. And we're really pushing to support all of our school. This, this isn't going to happen unless all seven elementary schools are doing this together. So, yes, we are asking for a donation. Yes, we have payment plans. Yes, we have creative ways that I've already heard from our fifth grade teachers of ways that onsite folks are being able to fundraise as well. So, we're doing a little bit of all of it.
So, what's the suggested donation?
$200.
And then, do you need parent chaperones to go as well? Or will it just be teachers?
Yes, so there are parent chaperones. It depends on the group, and it depends on the number of students. So, like for my school, we get to have four chaperones who get to go because we're smaller.
Do the chaperones pay the $200, or do they pay a different rate?
We're asking for them to pay the donation as well, so.
Does that $200 cover the cost?
Yep.
How many kids are you talking about for each year, roughly?
So, my notes are right up there. I didn't get them sitting there. Right, Mr. Marshall, right on the left of you is my computer, and there's a blank page if you could bring it up to me. I calculated that for you. Nope, just the paper.
Just the paper?
Yep. Just the paper. Let's see how fast Mac can run down here. Always coming back this way. Thank you, Michael. All right. So, we are talking about 375 students this year who we're looking at going, and we're looking at 40 adults total for the whole district.
Forty kids?
Forty adults.
Forty adults.
375 students.
So, how much does that equate to dollar-wise?
So, the whole total amount total without, so just the total is $113,000 and $113,204. We had over 50,000 that went towards it from the Noah grant.
So, we have 50,000 of the 113, or?
Yep, yeah.
So, we need to come up with like $60,000?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a question. Who do I ask? Yeah, why, why can't we just pay for it? Could we look into that?
But I really, really want us to be thinking systematically of how we can do this over years. So, that's really, really important to me. And that's what was written in the grant. So, the reason we got the Noah grant is the only reason we got this grant that's $100,000 over each year for three years, so we just did one year, we're now in year two, is that we built in sustainable, systematic ways to be able to do science with our teachers and to be able to partner with our local outdoor education agencies and systematic ways to help our fifth graders get out there. I want to write another one because I'd like to expand that to be able to be all of our outdoor ed programs, but we can't apply until this one's up. But they already know that's what we want to do. So, I appreciate that, and it's, and I want us to brainstorm, but I really want us to think of over time. There are schools who go to Nature Bridge with this price, and they've done it for over 20 years. I remember my first principal when she had us go, and we all thought she was crazy. I love her. She's great. And she, but she had a vision, and she knew that this had to happen over time. And so, we built in some very systematic structures within our school that allowed us to have this regular fundraising machine that felt part of the school culture. That's what we want for these seven elementary schools. We really want these fifth graders to, when they go to LJ, when they go to TPA, when they go to Tech Middle, that they feel that they are part of something bigger than just their elementary school. That's really the big message behind taking them to outdoor ed. It's, outdoor ed is like the, what we can visually see, but it's really about how do these kids go to sixth grade and feel not alone.
So, what happens if a child's family can't afford the $200? They can't go?
Oh, no. So, as a public school, they will go. So, that's why we're doing the other fundraising as well. And I know we're talking with other businesses as well to help sponsor a child. And that's why we are asking for families to donate because like, we already have families who are donating more, and we already have families who are saying, I can only donate this amount. And then, we have others who are saying, literally, they're going to do change jars to collect their change. So, that's, and that's why we've taken on the festival as well. That's a biggie. That's a big one to take on, but at seven schools, we can do it.
So, could the district then, I don't know, come up with a number that they would contribute each year for 10 years, whether it's $10,000 or some kind of, that kind of a commitment? Would that be more favorable?
I think it's a good conversation to have.
Okay.
And I would want to make sure that it gets to our schools that might need it more than others.
Yep, okay.
And to our staff that will need it more than, it just, it's a great conversation to have.
Okay. I'm just putting it out there.
Do the staff have to pay to go?
No, 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 no.
When you said the staff needed, I'm like.
No, no, no. I just, we want them to be a part of it all. No, 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 no. No.
Thank you.
No, this is extra time for a fifth grade teacher. It really is. It's, it is significant. It's also special. So, we have brainstormed multiple ways to support a fifth grade teacher who can or cannot. And there are a lot of reasons why a fifth grade teacher may not be able to, but the key part here is the communication with their team. That's key. So, there are a lot, there are lots of ways to do it creatively. So, my understanding is there is a stipend. That's, that's something that could be discussed as well if we wanted to talk about a place to have a discussion around it. It is a contractual component. It is there. It is small, but it is there, and that would be a conversation, but that would be in negotiations.
So, if the students do this in fifth grade, will sixth grade outdoor ed still happen? Do you know?
I, I would say we would definitely continue to do that. And this is not to take away, it's to give more experiences. And one of the things that, personally and professionally, I've seen outdoors camp for fifth graders be kind of an amazing experience, life-changing and building those relationships. What I really appreciate is the thoughtfulness of having them go in January. Sometimes you, you don't get to go that early, and it's the end of the year. So, you don't have, you can't build the capacity that you've created in January. So, that's so thoughtful. I'd love that idea.
I want to go in October. We'll get there.
And then, will Evergreen still do their outdoor ed program as well? Or will this take place for Evergreen?
Right now, Evergreen is doing this only. So, right now, it's all, and Richard Crane as well. So, we discussed trying to get into both. The program that they went to did not have the capacity to take all of our schools. Another program that was, is luring us is Walker Creek through Marine County Office of Ed. They also were not ready to take us because as a team, we wanted all seven in a window of time. We did not want us all spread out. We played with the idea, this grant was written during distance learning. It was written in the middle of, the middle, the thick of distance learning. And so, when the team and I talked about it, we originally talked about even playing with, maybe we'll pilot different programs. Then, when it came to last year and who was really available and who was ready to take us, Nature Bridge found a way to. Then when it came to last year and who was really available and who was ready to take us, Nature Bridge found a way to fit us in. And the other ones did not. So we went with them. It's kind of a big deal to have a whole district go to one place. It's a very high selling point on there for them.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Please, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Tracy, you, you wanted just to do a public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, you're up.
I wasn't sure if agenda got which end is it. Hi, Tracy Ewens, a teacher in Roanoke Park. I teach at Lawrence Jones Middle School. I've been there for a week now. I'm not running from anything. I just need to experience in my life. So after 25 years at elementary, I thought I'd try middle school. So I'm, I'm here to talk about contract 4.2.2, which is the adjunct duty for 20 hours. Then in our district historically has been for secondary, for middle school and high school. And it reads like this, unit members may be required to perform the following duties. Attendance at graduation ceremonies, plays, concerts, dances, judging, speech events. Supervision at athletic events, sponsorship of class or club activities not to exceed, not to exceed 20 hours per year. Such duties shall be assigned on an equitable basis at each site. Except that a secondary site administrator may assign fewer duties to probationary, probationary and temporary unit members. In bargaining at the end of last year, when it all like came and we had that last part, there were some few other duties added into this because this is a expired contract. And it was like be on an interview committee for our principal and a few other ones. So at staff meetings, I know particularly at Evergreen and I believe at other sites, it was brought up at the beginning of the year that elementary school teachers now need to prove that we've done 20 years or 20 hours of adjunct. And we were shown, and I don't know if it was at all sites, a list of possible adjunct hours. It was provided by, I believe the administrators, the principals put together. And things on there were social, emotional learning, girls on the run, clubs, leadership, ELAC, PBIS, hospitality, family fun nights. And then there were arbitrary times for how much time they thought those things would take. And it was really kind of amazing to me and somebody that's always been super involved and done all these things. I'm like, that one took me way more hours than that one. And on this list, I can list many that I've done. And then kind of thinking about it, elementary school teachers, one, in the 25 years I've been in this district, have never had to like prove our adjunct duties. We've just do it. And I think this is almost like harvesting on just that general elementary school teacher that we just do these things. We volunteer. We help. You need us to do something, we're there. So I kind of started generating a list of things that weren't on the adjunct duty list for elementary school teachers and secondary teachers. I have these things happening too in my life and I can vouch for them. So things like mystery science, we didn't have those things purchased. So I'm trolling Dollar Tree to buy all those things. My Amazon wishlist putting together, parent conferences, possibly daily after school with the same parent every single day. Planning the field trips, the buses, gathering the money, making that happen. We go at second grade, I think we're going on five field trips this year. That planning time, I, those are planned already. Took my time. And we have yard duty, which sometimes goes into our break in, does that. I know that's kind of like debatable, the adjunct part. And there's the small stipend if we go on the overnight. New curriculum benchmark. I've been packing up my classroom at Evergreen to move to Lawrence Jones. First grade through second grade have been there the last two weekends trying to figure out this curriculum because we want to teach our children. We haven't had equitable or adequate training on that. Preparing for conferences. Each conference is 20 minutes to half an hour. It takes a long time to gather those materials. Planning multiple subjects in a day, helping a new teacher. My coworkers at Evergreen are getting a new teacher. It's going to be fabulous, but that's going to take time for them to make sure that that person's taken care of. All the SSTs we do in secondary or in elementary, we have to prep for those. That means you have to go find all the paperwork. You have to go in the cumes. You have to get it all together. Preparing for a new student. The night before you're told you're getting a new student. You need to find a chair. You need to find a folder. You need to have a name tag because we want to make it welcoming to our students. So elementary, which isn't even me anymore, is being told that we, and at different sites, different information. Again, kind of same thing happening before, communication not great. Are being told now you can't put a time card in for an IEP that you've done before until you do your 20 hours. And you can't do this time card for things that we've done in the past. And I know this is coming up and I, I just want to speak for the elementary school teachers. I hope will let me keep speaking for them, but this 20 hour adjunct and in there, why would you put the secondary teachers? Some of them can be exempt from it, but not say all teachers. So there's language issues and that was it. And I didn't have a timer going, so I talked quickly, but it was probably over my three minutes. So thank you.
I have a question though.
Yeah, go for it.
So to clarify, say you do a task, whatever it is, before you used to be able to, or you would just put it like on a time card for overtime or extra?
It matters what task you're talking about.
I'm just speaking generally. Like I'm not trying to be specific because you, you mentioned, put your, you used to write your time down for certain things. I'm just trying to understand because I don't know.
So there are a few things like PBIS when it first came and that's our whatever program behavior thing, which I've done and been part of. And the first year I was part of it, we would meet after school every, at once a month maybe, and we could time card for that. But you signed up knowing that you were time carding for that. And kind of the money fell and there's not money for that program anymore, which I feel is strong and useful if it's done right. So then, but there's things that the way it's presented is if you don't do 20 hours, we will not pay you for anything that you were previously paid extra for. And then it said, so did I answer your question?
Yeah. So to me, what it sounds like it's written, like there's 20 hours, but let's just say of work. And you have to do that 20 hours before you start to get, you start to fill out time cards for other tasks.
In, but it's never been that way.
Okay.
So this is brand new to elementary that this has even like come across that this has been this way. That in the 25 years, elementary school teachers do things like hospitality. Because, and I can't speak for every site, just the ones I've been at, because we want our site to be a home. We want the kids, if the teachers are happy, the kids are going to be happy. We do the talent show because we want to. And you know, honestly, some years, the year that I had a newborn and two year old, I didn't do as much. That's my exempt year, but I'm going to make it up later because we're a family and watch out for each other and do that. So being told, you've got to do these 20 hours. And the way it's coming down, it's not being greeted like people are thinking, great, now you're telling me I have to do things. It doesn't even in the contract language make sense why it's me. I can't go to a dance. Well, now I can, but you know, I can't do those things. And so anyway, just want to kind of pointed out the language in there. And so feel free, feel free, keep asking me questions about it and I can give my experiences. And honestly, I'm excited to kind of do adjunct at middle school because I, that's why I went there, the dances and get to go to games and all those kinds of things. But that's the culture of those schools.
So Tracy, I have one question and I know we're on thin ice because we aren't supposed to really discuss this. But so it's in the contract, is that right? That was agreed to by Ripsia and CRPUSD?
Yes, and it's been in the contract.
So it's not that it's in the contract that Ripsia agreed to, is the problem how it's being implemented on a site level? I'm trying to figure out what the problem is here because without trying to be rude, you guys approved the contract. So I don't understand what the problem is in a contract that was approved.
So the part is the way it's being implemented, past practice is always, this district's always, and like, I think sometimes partially it's not knowing the culture of the district and how the people that have been here for, you know, over 15 years, how it's operated. And that the past practice has been that this hasn't been something we've been told to do and that it needs, that we're not going to get paid for something I did last year now if I don't do this 20 extra hours. And honestly, what I kind of see is like, it's going to come back and kind of bite you because 20 hours is.
Bite me though. You guys agreed to the contract too.
The, no, no, no. I don't mean you. It's not.
No, I, trust me, I didn't take it personally. I'm just saying, you guys agreed to this contract too. So I'm trying to figure out what the problem is.
It's, it's the way it came probably down from upper management down and the fact that now, and then also in here, the part, I can reread it where it says, such duties shall be assigned on an equitable basis at each site. Except the secondary site administrator may assign fewer duties to probationary and temporary unit members. So being at bargaining, at that point, it says secondary. Assumption is it's going to be the same as past practice and it's still going to be secondary and it's not coming. So at the end of bargaining, which we know last year that was not the most favorite part of my life. And that you would make the assumption that is same as past practice and that the language wasn't changing. Does that make sense? So yeah, yeah, that it's a way, I don't, it needs clarity, if anything. And the way it was brought to at least me at the staff meeting I was at was like, you, you just now, and then I read, okay, not to exceed 20 hours. I do way more than 20 hours. So kind of I'll, I'll do that. So anyway, just, any other? I love having questions.
Thanks Tracy.
No, just wanted to point it out.
Can someone get back to me with, with what a teacher's, you know, duties are from a contract standpoint? Does the workday start at eight o'clock and end at 3:30?
No.
I, I know that doesn't happen. I'm.
Contractually.
Contractually.
Yeah, what's the contract say?
Do you want it right now?
Because I was a teacher too at one time and the amount of time that I put into grading tests after the time in the classroom and preparing. But it, it all depends. I mean, so I, I would just like to get a clarification.
So the hours are, and I want it, eight?
I'm not asking for you Tracy, I'm asking from staffs.
Okay, I have the contract right in front of me. I don't mind pulling it.
But it, it varies differently from.
It's seven hours.
Elementary to middle to high school, correct?
The, the times, the times change. Like it can be eight, 10 to three, 10 or eight to three, but it's seven hours.
Because, you know, I, I just want to, yeah, just to bring that back for, for clarification.
It's in the, it's in the contract part. Yep. It's been seven hours forever. So, all right. Okay, thank you. I feel my number and stuff's on there. You'll find me at LJ now.
Okay, communications, AA student board members report. Start off with David. Can y'all hear me? Okay. Good evening and thank you for letting me speak tonight. A lot has happened since our last board meeting. On September 20th, seniors had their senior sunrise at the Cougar Stadium. A school supply drive was held August 22nd through September 14th. There were donation boxes found in the office, library, college and career center, student activity center and TAG building. Rancho had the first blood drive of the year. On September 1st, every donation of blood equaled three lives saved. We had 11 people donate, which saved 33 lives. On August 30th, we held Club Rush. Many of our clubs came out to the quad, showed themselves off to the student body. We had a great student participation as the quad was packed. Also, we had our freshman class council election at the Club Rush and had freshmen drop off their ballot at the election booth. As well, we had our first beer week of the year that was held on August 29th through September 1st. Monday was shady, 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 wear any, anything that gives you shade. For example, a hat or sunglasses. Tuesday was popsicle day. Wear your favorite flavor of popsicle color. Wednesday was clone day. Wear the same outfit with a friend or a group of people. Thursday was little miss, mister or mixed day. Wear a white shirt and write a little miss, mister or mix, then write a true fact about yourself. For example, mister spends money every day. Friday was beat the heat. Wear any summer clothing that was school appropriate. At the end of the spirit week, we held our first rally of the year. The welcome back rally was at the end of this, our first spirit week. During our rally, we had a dance, band, choir cheer and color guard performance. Our ASB class and fall captains were introduced, as well as Ms. Jessica Holman was given $20,000 during the rally by NBC for wearing the 2022 All-Star Teacher Award. And then the ASB class met with Ann Alea on September 8th to give them information about Unity Week and how we plan for the amazing week. And then as a school, we began WASC, the Accrediting Commission for Schools. This past month, we have already had two meetings with the main focus of our meetings are to have students while attending Rancho and leaving to be college and career ready, socially responsible individuals and active community members. We also have two students a part of this, including myself and our president, Melanie Maldonado. Finally, Rancho has a freshman foundation class. The class gives the opportunity for freshmen to ask questions about high school, get into a routine, understand the, the way high school works and to go to presentations about clubs, sports, classes, pathways and extracurriculars Rancho has to offer. As we look into the future, our annual ribbon week will be held next, or this week, which is to showcase awareness to anti-bullying, cancer, mental health, alcohol and drugs and the LGBT plus community. We will also have, we will also be having homecoming on October 8th. But from October 3rd to 7th, we will be packed with royalty elections, a football game and a dance. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, David. Naomi?
Good afternoon and thank you for having me. It has only been a month since Tech High had the first day, but we have accomplished so much. The second week of school is known to be one of the hardest weeks, which is why we made sure that everyone felt welcome and appreciated to be back. Comfort week is what allowed us to support our classmates by having lemonade stands, rock painting and making every student and teacher their own positive card to show our gratitude towards them. Another way we have been able to show appreciation to our classmates is by making each one of them their own birthday card and delivering them throughout their birthday month. Club Rush was a huge success as always. Every grade level was interacting with each other. Students were learning about new clubs or continued clubs based on their interests. Many of the clubs have already began having their meetings. This year we had a record high number of clubs participating in Club Rush. We are excited to see the clubs begin to complete their club constitutions. Soon after that was our very first big event, which was the Back to School Mixer. It was nice seeing everyone having fun. It was more than a dance. It was a place where we make sure there was comfort along with inclusion. There was DJs, game, food, games, a chalk station and a movie playing. It was a little of everything and I hope everyone enjoyed it as much as ASB enjoyed planning it. Last week, our first ever college and career fair took place during lunch and allowed all grades to go and look at colleges they might be interested in. One representative was sent from each college where students got to ask them any questions they might have. Talking about colleges, our counselor, we will be hosting a guidance night where students and parents can go to be informed about the requirements of graduating, financial aid, along with other important information. Tech High ASB will be having the first fundraising next Tuesday at Sorrel Time Yuggar Bar, where 20% of people's purchases will go towards our school from noon till closing time. As of right now, it's the beginning, as of right now, it's the beginning of planning homecoming, which will be on October 29th. The theme will be Halloween masquerade and it has been chosen by the student body. Volleyball, volleyball girls and boys soccer cross country have been happening. We look forward to cheering on our student athletes as always. It makes me very happy to share this new opportunity, our partnership with Chick-fil-A. This year THS has partnered with our local Chick-fil-A restaurant to participate in their Leader Academy program. Last Wednesday, three representatives from Chick-fil-A came to the ASB class, where the class watched a video and throughout did enjoyable, enjoyable activities, along with having a sandwich from Chick-fil-A. There was the opportunity of a Chick-fil-A Leader Academy event ambassador, which will be focusing on planning the 1 million book away. We look forward to working with John Reed Elementary School to visit campus, read to students and distribute books for home libraries. I felt very honored that my classmates. I felt very honored that my classmates selected me to be the Leader Academy Ambassador. I'll be focusing on making this event not only memorable to us, but to our community and hopefully having a happy impact and inspire others. I look forward to sharing next month's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Next, we have Ripsia President Ben.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Shimino, Trustees Brown, Gillies, Nelson, Wing, and Superintendent Perez. Congratulations to our student board members, Naomi Hernandez and David Zabeta. You're doing a great job already. I'm so excited to hear more about what's going on at Rancho and Tech High. A lot of cool stuff. You should be really proud of yourselves. We're lucky to have such cool students in this district, no doubt. My name is Ben Meschus and I'm this year's Ronart Park Catati Educators Association President. Very excited to be here. I'm used to being back in the corner. I've had the really wonderful opportunity to work as the band director at Technology Middle School since January of twenty seventeen, when I stepped in mid-year after being a long-term, I did a long-term sub position and then remained. I look forward to a lot more years at TMS. It's a great school. We've seen so many improvements since I've been there and it's, I, I love being there. I feel so lucky to get to work with our fabulous students. I feel so lucky to get to work with my teaching colleagues. Thank you for being here tonight. I, I love our administrators, Sarah McKenna and Macy Yohola, the support staff who make the school, that make the schools run safely and effectively, and the district office staff who are working to create opportunities for our students that they've never had before, like a, like an outdoor ed program administration. It's such a cool thing that we have that going on. It's a big, big, really, really cool program. That being, so I, we, we've got a wonderful group of leaders in Ripsia as well, who are doing an incredible job of advocating for the teachers of our district. Jennifer Gonzalez, our new treasurer, has displayed a ton of flexibility, making the switch from VP to treasurer. She's also super, super detail oriented in a way that I am myself not capable of being. She fills in a lot of really great gaps on that front and it means a lot, makes a big difference. Additionally, Megan Cochran has been doing a great job of fulfilling her role as secretary. By far, one of the easiest people to talk to and work with that I know. Central Valley Modesto pride over here. Nice to, nice to have somebody who knows where I grew up as well. Beginning of this year has had its ups and downs as always, it's normal. I keep hearing from, from many teachers over and over again, things are starting to feel more normal again, though. Most of our students now have been back in the classroom for a full school year. Thanks to tireless efforts from teachers, administrators, parents, everybody on campus, things are starting to feel, feel regular. Students are remembering what it means to be at school behaviorally, socially, and academically. They're more engaged, more open, and easier to work with. I've been so impressed with our student social skills. Despite the interruption to their in-person education, I've been blown away by their kindness, empathy, and enthusiasm. One of my sixth graders emailed me recently to let me know that another student had snapped at him during class. His wish was not for that student to be disciplined, but for me to check in and make sure that that student was doing okay because he was not acting himself. To have that level of empathy and understanding at that age is really, really cool. It's something we can all aspire to. Lastly, I'd like to make a quick shout out to Elena De Mars, the Expanded Learning Program Administrator, who's immediately become a great advocate for the music programs in the district. She has fostered a relationship with SSU's music program. This has led to, for example, tomorrow, the artist in resident D-Dat is going to be coming to my classroom and performing for my students. That wouldn't happen without her tireless efforts there. Additionally, at the end of this month, TMS band, Advanced Band students will be attending the Casodaro Music Camp Jump Start Program at zero cost to students. That's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday weekend program, and we've, I feel so lucky to be able to bring my students there and it would not happen without Elena. She's wonderful, amazing, amazing asset in the district office. While there's a marked improvement in student engagement and behavior this year, there are some serious issues that have motivated Ripsia members to be here tonight. First and foremost, as you've already heard, is adjunct duty at the elementary level. Article four point two point two has been in the contract now for forty-plus years and it has always been interpreted the same way. Up to twenty hours of adjunct duty can be assigned to secondary school teachers in this, in this district to cover a specific collection of tasks outside of contract hours. From the contract, those items are attendance at graduation ceremonies, plays, concerts, dances, judging speech events, supervision at athletic events, sponsorship of class or club activities, newly added last year or this year, district committees, school site councils, restorative justice, PBIS, and interview panels. The article goes on to say, "Such duties shall be assigned on an equitable basis at each site, except that a secondary site administrator may assign fewer duties to probationary and temporary unit members." Given this specific reference to secondary administrators, the understood interpretation has been clear. Adjunct duty is a secondary level responsibility. In response to this unilateral change in working conditions, Ripsia has issued a cease and desist and demand to bargain. Our expectation is that our primary school educators, who are already being forced to complete work tasks outside of contracted hours due to a lack of adequate prep time, will not be subjected to the additional burden of adjunct duty. Any result other than that will lead to Ripsia and CTA doing everything in our power to ensure that our contract and past practice are honored. It is forty years of past practice. We cannot up and change that without bargaining over it. Since submitting the cease and desist, I have been assured by district officials that the implementation of adjunct duty at the elementary level never took place and that it had only gone as far as polling elementary teachers on what kinds of adjunct duty they would be interested in taking on. However, it has been reported to me by multiple Ripsia members and Tracy tonight that at their meetings at the beginning of the year and in emails, site administrators have told teachers that they must complete twenty hours of adjunct duty. This is implementation of adjunct duty. You can't tell me you just polled it. If the admin told teachers they had to do this, it has been implemented. Until elementary teachers are informed by their administrators that adjunct duty is on hold and are successfully able to time-card the adjunct duties listed in four point two point two that they could before, Ripsia cannot consider the district to be in compliance with our cease and desist. We recently reached a settlement with the district with regard to an unfair labor practices charge and we are prepared to go down the road again if need be. Lastly, I wanted to comment on behalf of our members with regard to item four C from the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. The Board unanimously approved an amendment to Dr. Myra Perez's employment contract that gave her a three percent raise for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, resulting in a total annual salary of two hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars plus benefits. As Board President Shimino reported last month, the employment agreement between the district and the superintendent allows the Board upon receipt of overall satisfactory evaluation of the superintendent to be, consider granting an increase in the superintendent's annual salary. This begs the question, what does it take to receive a satisfactory evaluation? Last year, a failure in district leadership led to a six-day strike. A failure in district leadership led to the members of the district's largest labor partner demanding the opportunity for a vote of no confidence against Dr. Perez and passing that vote resoundingly. These are not things that happen when a superintendent is doing their job satisfactorily. At the June twenty-two, twenty-two board meeting, the Board dismissed the vote of no confidence out of hand and has now approved a raise and the possibility of an extension for Dr. Perez through the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. I trust that every member of the Board ran because you're passionate about ensuring equality in education for the students of our school district. Why else would you take this on? The members of Ripsia that I represent speaking here tonight are your closest partners in that goal. We are the people building connections with our students and helping them grow into fine young adults. We are the professionals who, after months of painful fighting leading up to and including the strike, came back to the classroom, put our noses to the grindstone, and made up for the time that we lost. We are the changemakers who are fighting for the future of our community. I implore the Board to reflect on the message that you've sent to the people who are doing the work every day to make CRP USD the best district it can be. It's not too late to rebuild this relationship. It's not too late to open our eyes and our ears to your partners in this critical task of educating the youth of our community and what we are telling you. I appreciate those of you who asked Tracy questions tonight. That means so much. That sends a really positive message. It's what we want to hear from you. We want you to hear us. We feel like you're only getting one side of the story and I appreciate any questions you have. I'm happy to answer them. Thank you for the work that you're doing here. We just want to be heard. Thank you.
Um, so, uh, last year, um, when we had one of Dr. Perez's evaluation, um, one of the vice presidents came to the meeting and basically said the same thing and I explained to her, I asked her, "Do you know how the evaluation works? What's the criteria for the evaluation? Do you know what we're evaluating, Dr. Perez?" And she said, "No." So, the way it works is we set goals and it's broad goals of the direction that we want to go. Our biggest focus was curriculum and policies that haven't been updated in, you know, a long time. We have books over twenty years old and we had policies like sexual harassment, lactation, like boilerplate policies that haven't been updated for, you know, nine years or more. So, we said, "This is, for this year, we want you to focus on these things." So, she put her resources and directed her team to update numerous policies. I mean, you've heard us read them out. We have, uh, you know, curriculum and, you know, part of that curriculum was, um, uh, personal development or training on the new curriculum and other things like that. So, she's put her effort to that and for that, I think she did a good job. I think she did a great job, actually, because a lot of that stuff hasn't been done in years and there's been a few superintendents between, uh, you know, in those last ten years. So that's how it was done. And actually, her evaluation is something that she put in her contract and it's whenever we have, um, whenever we go over, uh, I forgot the term, but, um, whenever we check in with her and we have her meetings, we're just making sure that she's following those steps and she's doing the way we want. It's not like how we feel about Myra, how everyone feels about Myra. It's about these big overall goals that we're going for. So, that's why I supported Myra, because I feel like she's doing those things that we asked her to do. Another thing that we did ask is to, uh, reach out to, um, everybody in the district and make things more personable in meetings, not just directives, but a conversation. And I feel like she's been moving in that direct, direction and I've heard that from a few people. I mean, I haven't talked to every single person in the district, but I feel like we're going in that direction and I feel like that's something that she'll do this year. And I, last year was a very, very horrible time and I don't expect anyone to forget it or not have any bad feelings about it, but I wouldn't, um, support, uh, giving her a raise or extending her contract if I feel that she genuinely really wanted to mend our relationships and go towards that direction of, you know, students first, taking care of everybody, and making sure people are heard and everyone has their own input. So that's why I supported the raise. And I did hear what you guys said, but I, we made, we made a, we made a path, we made a process, we made, uh, goals and she reached them and that's why she got her raise.
Can I say one more thing? I, um, obviously with the exception of Cassie, no one wants to really sit up here because no one ran for school board, but someone asked that's running for city council, "What's one piece of advice I could give them?" And I said, um, "I knew I was never going to make anybody happy, but I never expected to be criticized without anyone seeking to understand." So we get criticized a lot up here. I get very few requests of seeking to understand and for those of you that know me or that have reached out, both the people here in the audience and the people listening tonight, I'm very happy to sit down and explain things to people. And I feel like when we have a conversation, light bulbs on both sides go off. When we have us sitting up here and you sitting out there or listening, that's when the collaboration doesn't work. So, again, I've said it at previous board meetings, I'm happy to sit down and explain or talk about the things that I can and explain it the best way that I can. I'm always excited to hear, it's really hard when you do public comment because we actually aren't really allowed to talk back and forth. We're probably doing it more than we were supposed to. But by the time it comes to a board meeting, by the time the five of us are sitting up here, we can say yes or we can say no. We can't really change things at that point. I can't say, "Well, I like this, but let's move it to this much money or that much money." It's kind of a yes or no by the time it gets here. So committees, talking to us, emailing us, um, otherwise, to be honest with you, it just really feels like we're getting yelled at. And I can only be yelled at so much when I can't talk back or explain why. So, that would be my ask for everyone on the board and in the community, is if there's something that's really bugging you, reach out and, and talk to us and tell us. Because I don't know unless I come up here. So when I get told, "You're only hearing one side of the story," you're right. Not one person has reached out to me this school year, so how am I supposed to know unless, and I am reaching out to other people, but only one person's talking to me unless I go out and seek it. So that would be, that's my frustration personally.
Joe, got a couple comments? I have a couple comments.
Yeah.
One of the reasons I've hung on to, to this board position is because being focused on student achievement. And that hasn't been the focus the last fifteen years. We have these beautiful buildings, we have these beautiful facilities. These facilities don't improve, um, curriculum, they just provide a nicer place to go and get it. I have been, um, for years asking for test scores and results and hadn't got those. So we hung on, um, I'm proud that we are focused on curriculum. I'm proud we're focused on student achievement for all kids. It's just amazing that hasn't happened in the past. If you want to go back and check the records, check what previous superintendents got for raises. They got equal or more than Ripsia in the other district, or the other unit, excuse me. Myra did not this time, so, um, she deserves every penny and more of what she's doing because it's focused for the kids. It's not focused for bond issues to make this place look pretty. What we want to achieve is student achievement and things like the program, the outdoor ed, and things like that. Those are amazing things that are happening in this district and I think we're going in the right direction. That's why I also voted for Myra's raise and she has a hundred percent of my support and she will on this board as long as we focus on students and achievement and not building fancy buildings. Thank you.
I'm going to say something. I won't make it. Is this working?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, one of the things Ben had mentioned a little bit ago was not understanding why we gave the superintendent an increase in salary and an increase in her extension on her contract. I don't think people realize that we have one employee, the superintendent. We set goals with her every year. She comes to us with the binder, I'm not kidding, this thick of what we asked for her to do, um, what we expect her to do, and she comes back with those results. So this isn't just like, "Oh, we like you, here's three percent." That's not how any of this works. This is an hours-long, I would say probably ten hours on average of what she's going to do, what direction we're going to go in. I will say that when Myra came on board, we were student-focused. We talked about curriculum, we talked about getting rid of the twenty-five-year-old textbooks. Unfortunately- Unfortunately, she signed her contract and three weeks later, we shut down. She hadn't even started till July 1st. This happened in March, but she worked, she called all of us. We worked daily. We discussed. We had emails of what we were going to do, how this was going to work. It was rough for all of us. We understand the teachers bore the brunt of that distance learning issue, masks, vaccines, all of that. So, I just want people to understand the process we go through as a board. It is, this isn't, you know, we understand the strike. We understand the vote of no confidence. It wasn't taken lightly. Ben had mentioned that we just didn't think about what anybody else had to say. We found out about the no-confidence resolution. Nobody came here to talk to us about it. That, that day that it was voted on, the chairs were empty. So, we all chose to make our comments. It's on the record. But our goal has always been the students. We lost a year and a half. We all know that, close to two years, that you guys are working really hard to get back. We understand that. But we need to focus on the students. That's everybody's goal. And we can get back or actually, I hope we get to a better place. I won't be here after a couple more months. I'm, I'm really sad about that because I really wanted to be involved in the curriculum. And we're going to have one-time money that we can use for these things that we've all been dreaming of doing for years. I mean, I think we're looking at $8 or $10 million. So, I'm, I'm sad that I'm not going to be involved in bringing in the textbooks and lowering class sizes and getting rid of combo classes. These are all the things we've talked about wanting to do that are really important. So, I'm going to miss that part of it. I'm not going to miss being yelled at and called names and that sort of lovely stuff. But I think you've got a fantastic person here in Dr. Perez. And one of the other things is that she's available for anybody to go talk with. So, she's always available. I, I mean, I've called her at 11, 12 o'clock at night. I've texted her. We have an hour text conversation that way. So, she's available for people who have questions and concerns. And I think if everybody goes and meets halfway, we won't have cease and desist. We won't have these kind of issues. We can get back to what we need to do. So, that's all. Thank you.
Yes, so as a board, we each have one-fifth of a voice, but our voice together is, is when we take a vote. And, and the, the result of that vote is, is how the board acts. And we support the vote whether it's three to two or five to nothing. And this board has one employee. So, my, my comments about Dr. Perez's review are, are on record. I, I don't like, you know, I don't like repeating myself. I did say, you know, the first year we had her, her review, you know, there was, it was quite spirited. And, you know, people claimed a lot of things about Dr. Perez. And I did not know at the time what the process was for complaints about that, but there is a universal complaint protocol that's available on the website. And I said I'd be watching for any of those during the year, and nobody turned one in. So, you know, that's, that's the avenue that I think that's, you know, stay in your lane. That's where Ripsia members and people of the community can, can voice their opinion of it. But, you know, after the fact, voicing, you know, dissatisfaction with somebody having a, a personnel review, I just, I just question, you know, I just question that. I mean, we, as a board, we have one employee. We don't get involved in, you know, a single teacher's, with their performance review unless it's something that happens in closed session that is some kind of disciplinary matter. So, you know, there, there's, there's a process in place. And I would encourage people to, if, if you have issues, to, to, to go down that, that process rather than, you know, throwing out accusations or, you know, your disapproval of, of a single employee's review process in the middle of a, a, a meeting that happened three months, two months ago. So, I just questioned the efficacy of that. So, that's all I can say.
Thanks. We're going to move on to a receipt of official correspondence.
The official correspondence tonight is from Sonoma County Office of Education, Dr. Harrington, regarding our visits regarding textbook sufficiency at our schools. And we had no findings. It was Thomas Page and John Reed.
We do have a public comment for 8N, Kim Stainer. 8N.
Hi, I am Kim Stainer. I have been in this district for 26 years. And I just wanted to address the approval of application for exemption from required expenditures for classroom teachers via ed code. I've looked at the document. I know that the reasoning behind this application was we were comparing to other districts and that we were below what the state minimum requirement is. I guess a question I had, and it's obviously a little late because it's already here, and I hear some of what you're saying, is you'd like this information from us prior. So, I'm going to work on that as well. But when I looked at it, I was confused, like the data is from 2021, which is before we had all these huge raises in our area and in like districts where three-year deals were happening and all of that. So, I was just, it, again, didn't ask that question prior, but I, that was just something I would ask about if I could go back in time. What I really want to address is you guys don't have an easy job, and neither do we. So, I get that you guys are in a position where you get a lot of complaints. Guess what? We get complaints a lot too. I, I hear that. The thing I want to point out is that we are, again, below minimum. That's what the teachers are hearing. You are worth below minimum. Our DO, our district administrators, get above minimum. We are, again, below minimum. Now, I know that this is an application, I assume it's just for a year. That's something I don't understand. I just want to point that out because that's the message that is being sent out, is that we continue. We fought so hard last year just to try to get to a minimum salary, and we're still being told we're below minimum. So, I, I felt, I felt the need to come and speak to that. I do want to address, I know this is off-topic and I apologize, but I would love to send an email out to the board and set up some days where you can come into my classroom and you could, I will set up meetings, I will get teachers in there, and I will talk to you. We will talk to you. I will make sure it is a positive experience because I do feel that that is necessary. And I appreciate that you are open to that. And Ms. Wing, thank you for pointing that out, that you want to talk to us. Beginning of the year is always kind of rough. It's busy for us, just like it's busy for you. But I'm happy to organize that. And I will send emails out, and I will try to organize a time. You tell me a day that works. Luckily at Evergreen, we all have lunch at the same time, and we will come and you can hear from us. I think that that is going to help mend things, is to have that open communication. So, I just want you to hear that. I really appreciate that, and thank you for your time.
For the consent agenda, I make a motion that we approve A through Q on the consent agenda. Can I get a second?
I make a second that we approve items 8A through 8Q.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9, Educational Services. Item 9A will be a public hearing to solicit the recommendations and comments of the public regarding the purpose of determining the sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials in the following subject areas: mathematics, history, social science, and reading language arts. There's no public comment. Then, Dr. Perez will present on 9B.
Yes, so this resolution is an annual resolution where we are to ensure that there is a sufficiency of instructional materials for every student, including our English learners, all students. And that's what you have here tonight for approval. And the areas are mathematics, science, history, social science, English language arts, and English language development component of the adopted curriculum.
Have all the materials for the new ELA program come in?
My understanding is yes, and we, we were distributed.
No.
No?
Okay, well, I will have to check back and see.
Okay.
So, they didn't come in or they weren't distributed?
What came in was distributed. There could be some materials that are coming in now. So, I'll, I'll have to verify with Educational Services.
9D, Resolution 2023-5, Determining Sufficiency of Instructional Materials. And that's a roll call vote. Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion? Resolution 2023-5, Determining Sufficiency of Instructional Materials.
I make a motion to approve 9B.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Chimino?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Nelson?
Yeah.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
9C, Approval of 2022-23 California Interscholastic Federation Representatives.
This is also annual.
These are, these are representatives before you, for approval for Technology High School.
So, can I get a motion to approve 9C, Approval of 2022-23 California Interscholastic Federation Representatives?
Make a motion to approve item 9C.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No?
Yeah, you're, you're right. It's not a roll call. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's okay, I usually make mistakes, so thanks a lot.
He's just checking you.
10, Personnel Services. 10A, Approval of Provisional Internship Permit for the history teacher at Technology Middle School.
Yes, so we have a provisional internship. As you know, we've, we've communicated out, we've advertised, and we have not been able to find someone with a credential. So, we have an intern that is currently in a credential program.
Can I get a motion to approve 10A?
Make a motion to approve 10A.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10B, Approval of Provisional Internship Permit for a second-grade teacher at Thomas Page Academy.
Once again, we have looked for, for teachers. We have not found a teacher. So, we're going to have an intern position at this person. This person is working on their credential currently.
Can I get a motion to approve 10B?
Make a motion to approve 10B.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10C, Ratification of Virtual Learning Academy Memorandum of Understanding.
So, this is a new one for this school year. As you may recall, we had a Virtual Learning Academy MOU for last school year that ends on June 30th. And then this is for this school year.
I make a motion to approve 10C. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10D, Approval of District Community Liaison Job Description.
As you know, to better serve the community, we find that these positions are really required, a community liaison, to help connect us with the community. So, we are proposing a job description for a district liaison who will help with DLEC, LCAP, and district-type committees. And so, that's what you see before you. You're, you have a job description that defines more clearly. We have a community liaison position, job description, but this is more district-level work.
I get a motion to approve 10D.
Make a motion to approve 10D.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10E, Approval of District Community Liaison Salary Schedule.
So, this goes along with the job description, and we've included the district community liaison within the salary schedule.
Can I get a motion to approve 10E?
I make a motion to approve 10E.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10F, Ratification of the CRPUSD-CEA District Community Liaison Memorandum of Understanding.
So, we met with CSE to discuss this position, and there's an agreement that we came to add this position to CSE. And that's what you have before you for approval.
Make a motion to approve 10F. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to take a five-minute break. 11A Obsolete Textbooks from Rancho Cattati High School, Tech Middle School, and Tech High School.
I can speak loudly. So we have some books at three sites, Rancho Cattati, Tech Middle, and Tech High, that we want to consider obsolete, and most of that is due to the curriculum, but I was just made aware of a whole room at Tech Middle School that has books that have been sitting there that no one wants for a while. But the first part of the process is to declare them obsolete, and then we will dispose or recycle them at a later date.
Does Lawrence Jones not have any credentials?
They haven't told us yet, but I expect all the sites will have some books at some point.
Let me get a motion to approve 11A. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12 Board Services. 12A Approval of 2021-22 Un-audited Actual Financial Report.
Where did we move 12AA to for the 10A enrollment? Underneath, right underneath this one?
Yeah, A, then AA.
A, okay, thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm here to present the unaudited actuals for 2021, which, you know, I think, just for clarification, this is, this report today is about how we closed the last school year. So June 30th was the last day of the year. We work all summer to close the books and prepare this report. And our auditors, so I don't know if I have to read all this to you, but unaudited actuals is a report of all the activities and all the district funds, identifying unspent funds or reserves that are carried forward into future years. The final, this information is used by our auditors to prepare our official audit report. The auditors will conduct their final phase of the audit for the prior year in October, and we should have a draft copy of that audit in December, and the final audit report will be presented to the board in January. The County Office of Ed, this report is also submitted to the County Office of Education, and they will give you a review of the report at a later date. So what are things changed, common things? The final books of the district have been closed. I report to you all throughout the year of, you know, the ups and downs of the information that has changed throughout the year that affect this budget or last year's books. So sometimes we have revenue that's received that wasn't anticipated and/or expenditures that were not completely used or overspent in some cases. So the total revenue for the, the total general fund revenue for the district was just under $85 million, or just over, excuse me, $85 million. And you can see that the majority of that comes from our local control funding formula, you know, just under 70% comes from the formula. And then between state revenue and federal revenues, about just under $10 million or right around nine or 10 million each, and that's, federal dollars include title, all the title dollars, 1, 2, 3, and 4, ESER funds, which is a lot of the federal money that we get. And then state funds include lottery, special education, we get a little bit for mandated costs, and then there were also some restricted state funds that we received, similar to ESER, mostly for learning recovery and that kind of thing. So, and our local funds include our parcel tax revenue and, you know, the donation from the great funds make up the majority of that money. So again, oh, no, not again, we're talking about expenditures now. We had, on the unrestricted side of the budget, we had just under $48 million of expenditures, combined total general fund, general fund expenditures of $81.4 million. And this is just what it looks like graphically. From a total general fund expenditure standpoint, 77% of our budget goes towards people, salary and benefits, and for our unrestricted budget, which is the majority of our funds, 85% of that money goes towards salary and benefits for all our people. So this spreadsheet kind of breaks down what the changes were. You know, we presented in June with our, the submission of our budget for 2223, a estimate of how we were going to close. So this is the comparison, basically the comparison between June and how we closed or finished. And, you know, we thought we would have a $300,000 surplus in our unrestricted general fund, and we wound up with a $631,000 surplus. And all, for all intents and purposes, that's, that's within 99.4% of what we said, so it's pretty good. But of course, so that's, this is what it looks like. Again, this is that $631,000 surplus, but that was before, and this is the kicker, we, the governor in July, which was after the school year ended, adopted in his budget COVID-19 ADA relief for districts. And I have a slide, again, these are highlights of our, of a big report that you have in front of you, but what it basically says is that for 2021-22, the year that just ended, and the information I'm giving you right now, in July, he decided that all districts can use the 2019-20 ADA percentage that we had for that year and apply that to our current year enrollment. So that resulted in, wait for it, three more million dollars, basically.
Did that money come in, or is that just what he's promised us?
We have not received it yet necessarily, but it's going to come because it's...
Well, we really can't include that in...
No, I did, and it was, that's the best practice. It's, that was what was signed into law, and it's the best practice per our auditors and the county as, as what we can...
So you include it?
Yes. We haven't actually received it, like you said, but that's, that's how much of the state funding goes.
It hasn't been anticipated to be received.
They're going to do a certification in November, I think, to make sure that we, so there were some parameters on what we had to have done throughout the year, which has to do with independent study, you could see at the bottom of this slide. And we did all those things, so...
But one time only?
One time.
One time, not ongoing?
It's not ongoing because, you know, we were getting funded on our, you know, we always get funded on our ADA, but we got to increase our ADA because we got to use the percentage of ADA from 1920, which was around 95%. So it's, you know, all throughout the year, I was saying, oh, if we hit this number, if we hit anywhere near what we normally hit from a attendance standpoint, we, because our enrollment increased so much that we would get more money, you know, we didn't hit that number, we missed that number by quite a bit due to many things, mostly COVID, and he gave it to us anyway, so, I mean, thankfully...
To every school throughout the state.
Yeah, yeah. Every district got the ADA, COVID-19 ADA relief that is LCFF-funded. So that actually changes the one number on the top there. LCFF funding changed, you know, $2.9 million. Now we're at $3.6 million surplus this year, which is obviously great news. The roller coaster of this, of last year was incredible. I mean, you heard me talk to you all throughout the year and how, how the information changed all throughout the year, and, you know, kept getting better, but, you know, the governor really kept, kept close to his chest how he was actually going to give us this money if he could, you know, the, I don't know. We're just really thankful that the governor made this decision, obviously was after the year was over, so we didn't know until then that we were going to get this. But it's all good news. So, you know, all these things are, you know, this will go, go towards our ending balance, and ending balance is important for fiscal solvency, it's based on a three-year projection. Fund balance is our first line of defense to offset significant level of deficit spending that we potentially had prior to some of these changes that have happened. I'll report more on that next, next time. And for, you know, for future use, you know, we'll, the superintendent has, has a wish list of things that she wants to fund, and I, and I know the, I know sites, and everyone else probably has ideas, and we're going to, we're going to gather that input and do something good with it.
One-time fund, because it's...
One-time, yes, sir.
... expenditures, one-time.
Yeah.
That's all they give us left, is one-time.
Yeah.
I know, I know, but I mean, you can't be funding ongoing programs, because then you get to the cliff when you're, if you spend your money.
You know, it's great to have money in your savings account, you know, there, all signs are pointing towards a recession that we're going to have to endure, and who knows what happens to state funding when that happens. So having some reserves in our, in our accounts is a, is a good thing.
So with the increase in ADA and the newer money that we got after the school year closed, cabinet will come up with a plan which goes to the Budget Committee, which discusses it, correct?
Yeah.
Which then comes to the board for approval.
I think we want to gather from everyone, from, from parents, from staff, you know, what, what is most needed, what's most necessary. The patterns and trends have always been mental health, social-emotional learning, you know, and, you know, we have a curriculum problem, we need to get updated in our curriculum. So we're moving as fast as we can on that. So we did ELA, ELD, we're planning to do math middle school, there was not an official adoption done in the district, so that's what we're doing next. We do have Eureka Math at the elementary, and then we're, we have to, we're looking at science and beginning the work on science, and we have to look at social studies. So, you know, it's one-time money, so we'll get as much as we can so that the teachers have what they need to teach. No?
If it, if it works out and the timing works out, I think it would be good if we could do, like, one of the town, it was semi-town hallish, like you did last year, either right before or in the middle of the strike, it's all kind of blurs together. And we did it over at the, yeah, La Bath, the Costco place is what I call it, but La Bath works too. And I just thought that was really great for, we could have open dialogue, and there were a lot of people there with some wonderful questions and ideas and any of the parent advisory committee, but...
That was way after the strike, by the way, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks. But again, it all runs together. And I just thought that was a really open and great way to communicate with our, with everybody. So if we could do something like that too, that would be great.
All right, so this last slide is just the balances in all our funds. You know, we're spending down our, our bond fund, building funds, Fund 21 there, we have about $5 million, $5.5 million in expenditures, we have $6 million left.
Could you go back?
Yeah.
Just clarification, Fund 51, bond interest redemption, or is that the bond...
So that is the county office, that's the county assessor's office's balance... So that is the county office, that's the county assessor's office's balance for the districts to pay off the bonds that we have on the books. That's not anything that's housed-
That's nothing, that's not our dollars that are left-
No, that's not, not anything that's housed here, it's just a, it's part of our, part of the report that we have to submit to our auditors, and, and, and it becomes part of our audit report.
So in other words, when I pay my taxes, the lines for the Katariroon Park School District, when everybody's, is paying taxes on property, comes up to that money that's owed?
This is the fund balance in, in that fund, at the county, at the county-
Right.
County treasurer, God, I said, I don't think I said that earlier, but the county treasurer, and they use-
That's gonna make payments on the-
Yes.
Three hundred and fifty million that's owed, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's just the ten million as payment-
Collected, yeah. It's collected.
Total mortgage over here of three hundred and fifty million.
Right. It's the total collected from the taxpayers to pay off the, to pay off our obligations.
It's not till twenty fifty-two or something?
I'll make it.
Sorry, I don't need to laugh, bro.
Come on, don't doubt me.
We'll name the next building after you.
No, no, don't do that.
Any other questions about the report? I mean, this is, I know that was a quick presentation, but this is a comprehensive report, and I didn't get any questions over the weekend, so I think all good news. I, I mean, I, I couldn't, I couldn't be happier that the governor really came through for us, not just for twenty-one, twenty-two, but for twenty-two, twenty-three and beyond. So it's all good. Should I stay up here to talk about the attendance, or are there any questions about that? I know Myra shared, shared with you the, the attendance, the ten-day attendance, which was right before the end of the month, which is what I would be reporting to you on, so I didn't, I didn't plan on giving you anything to talk about, but that, it, it, it's looking pretty solid, we're right around six thousand, and if you look at the attendance versus enrollment for those first ten days, it's, it's almost ninety-five percent. So that's, that's about the historic ADA percentage in, in our district, so that looks good as well.
So I'm confused.
Yeah.
Which is easy to do. So enrollment at a little over six thousand?
Yes.
So attendance fifty-seven thirteen.
That's about nine-
With absences and stuff, or?
That, that is our attendance, yeah.
That's our attendance.
Attendance, attendants, or average daily attendance would be-
We're losing about five percent attendance, right?
Yeah, that's about our historic average for ADA in this district.
Five percent.
Ninety-five percent attendance.
Those are the things that we say, everybody go to school, don't, don't stay home.
We're still, you know, we're still dealing with some COVID-related, you know?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this right, and we don't have fifty-seven hundred students, but our enrollment is close to six thousand.
Uh-huh.
So when does the enrollment number get fixed? My daughter got a call about my granddaughter not being at Rancho, she was never enrolled at Rancho, she's going to Crete.
There's always some hiccups at the beginning of the year with enrollment from, you know, we, we're getting our information from several different sources, you know, Matt, Matt does an enrollment report for, for us at the district level, we're getting information from the sites itself, and there are always some hiccups along the way that, that we need to catch up on, you know? But that is a pretty solid, that is a solid number, I'm very confident in the, that we won't see a huge change from that six thousand enrollment number in the next, in the coming months.
So we'll have a better idea at the October board meeting?
Uh, October, I'll have September data for you.
Okay.
I want to remind the board that we do need to approve the unaudited, unaudited actuals before.
Sorry.
So, we're discussing the next item, but I want to make sure you don't forget.
Excuse me?
We're holding you to this number.
I know, right?
Okay, real quick, twelve A approval of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two unaudited actual financial report. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve twelve A.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then I think we're good on the, is everyone okay with twelve AA?
Uh-huh.
Okay, move on to twelve B, resolution twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four recognition, recognizing October ninth, twenty-twenty-two through October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two as week of the school administrator.
Yes, this is a resolution recognizing the work of the administrators, we, you know, throughout the year, we have different, different weeks, and we wanted to honor our administrators this, for, for that week of October.
I make a motion to approve twelve B. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Chimino?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Nelson?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Twelve C, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two, adopting the actual GAN limit for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year and the projected GAN limit for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
I don't know if there are any questions about this, but this is an annual resolution that we need to, that needs to be decided or voted on and, or passed. But the GAN limit basically is the appropriation limit that the state puts on districts, and we didn't need to make any adjustments to that this year.
I make a motion to approve twelve C. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Chimino?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Nelson?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Twelve D, first reading, exhibit one-one-one-three, district and school websites.
Yes, this, you have the current policy and then the new policy, which includes information on nondiscrimination of employment in the cases of family care and medical leave. You can see the different ARs there. And there's also the difference here being contact information for the district liaison on homeless students and other persons as required by ed code four-eight-eight-five-two-point-six. So those are the, the big changes in the policy, and this will make us current. And we're seeking a, this, oh, sorry, this is the first reading.
First reading. Twelve E, first reading, BP and AR three-five-two-three, electronic signatures.
Mr. Bartolome, that's yours, your item, I believe?
I know what we did last month was that if there were any questions, I'd try to answer any questions, because there are so many.
Nope.
And I know you had a chance to read, to read them prior to today, so, I know we have to read them all, but I don't know if you need me to talk about any one of these.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Twelve F, first reading and waive second reading, approval of revisions to bylaw nine-two-two-zero, governing board elections.
Well, this is about governing board elections, we, this is the most current policy, we were a little outdated, so that, this, this explains the trustee area elections.
Could I get a motion to approve twelve F?
I'll make a motion to approve twelve F.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve G, first reading and waive second reading of approval of bylaw nine-two-two-three, filing vaccines, filling vaccines.
No, only vacancies.
Vacancies, sorry, vaccines is like in my mind.
So this board policy is about a vacancy, and we, we are gonna find ourselves in that situation, so we wanted to provide the, the most updated board policy for you, and that's why we're asking for waiving of the second reading so that we're good to go.
And just to be clear, we won't start that process till December, correct?
Correct. I was advised from Sonoma County Office of Education that once the new board is sworn in on December thirteenth, after that, we will start to fill the vacancies, we have sixty days to fill that vacancy, and we will go through an interview process. I do have a sample process from a neighboring district that I will share with the board at that time.
So everything's set except for the one district where nobody set forth?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
You gonna move, Krista?
No. Thank you, though.
Twelve G, first reading and waive second reading, approval of bylaw.
Wait, we have to vote on G.
What's that?
We have to vote on G.
I know, I'm reading it again so I can read it right.
Oh, sorry.
Practice makes perfect, okay? I'm trying to learn how to read here. Approval of bylaw nine-two-two-three, filling vacancies. Could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve twelve G.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve H, first reading and waive second reading, approval of AR one-three-one-two-point-four and exhibit one-three-one-two-point-four, Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures.
This is connected to a previous policy in terms of menstrual materials in the bathrooms, so this one is inclusive, the Williams complaint process is inclusive for grades six to twelve regarding that topic. And we're asking for the, the waiving and approval, so we're compliant on this.
I make a motion to approve twelve H. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve I, first reading and waive second reading, BP and AR five-one-four-one-point-two-one, administering medication and monitoring health conditions.
This is about NorCal, which helps with, should we have, we don't want this to happen, should we have a student that is overdosing on that, we can really apply this medication and with no harm to the student or, or to any staff member, so that's what, that's what that's about, is how we could administer that.
Can I get a motion to approve twelve I?
I'll make a motion to approve twelve I.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twelve J, second reading, BP and exhibit zero-four-two-zero-point-four-one, charter school oversight.
Sorry.
You're sleeping.
No, I, just, my previous comment stands, if there's, this was, this is all the rest of second readings, and if there are any questions about them, again, you didn't the last time, but if you do this time, I'm glad to answer. Otherwise, I think you could just read them and-
Can I get a motion to approve twelve J?
Make a motion to approve twelve J.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twelve K, second reading, board policy three-one-one-zero, transfer of funds, can I get a motion to approve twelve K?
Make a motion to approve twelve K.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twelve L, second reading, AR and exhibit three-five-one-seven, facilities inspection. Can I get a motion to approve twelve L?
I'll make a motion to approve twelve L.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
These are all second readings, can I make a motion that we appro-
Don't we have to, I think I asked that last time, I think we have to read every single one.
We have to do each one, okay.
Yeah.
Why isn't my phone?
No, Rochelle.
That's to me, I see.
All right, twelve M, second reading, BP and AR three-five-five-zero, food service, child nutrition program, can I get a-
I'll make a motion that we approve twelve M.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve N, second reading, BP and AR three-five-five-one, food service operations cafeteria fund, can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve twelve N?
Yes. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve O, second reading, BP and AR three-five-five-three, free and reduced price meals. Can I get a motion to approve twelve O?
Make a motion we approve twelve O.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twelve P, second reading, AR four-zero-three-zero, nondiscrimination in employment, I make a motion to approve twelve P. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twelve P, second reading, AR four-zero-three-zero, nondiscrimination in employment, I make a motion to approve twelve P. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve Q, second reading, AR four-one-one-nine-point-one-two, four-two-one-nine-point-one-two, four-three-one-nine-point-one-two, title of-
Nine.
Sexual harassment complaint procedures. I make a motion to approve twelve Q. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve R, second reading, AR four-one-six-one-point-one, four-two-six-one-point-one, four-three-six-one-point-one, personnel illness and injury leave. I make a motion to approve twelve R. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve S, second reading, AR four-one-six-one-point-two, four-two-six-one-point-two, four-three-six-one-point-two, personnel leaves. I make a motion to approve twelve S. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just a couple more.
Good thing we only got twenty-six voters announced.
Twelve T, second reading, AR four-two-zero-zero, classified personnel, I make a motion to approve twelve T. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve U, second reading, BP four-two-one-six, probationary permanent status, can I get a motion to approve? I make a motion to approve twelve U, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twelve V, second reading, BP four-three-one-five, evaluation supervision, I make a motion to approve twelve V. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve W, second reading, AR five-zero-two-two, student and family privacy rights, I make a motion to approve twelve W. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve X, acceptance of gifts and donations to school and district. Can I get, I want to read that out.
Yes, we have a lot of donations, as you can see from the list, including the Rancho Katari donation from the, for Jessica Holman, which is twenty thousand dollars. Let's see, and so we have a lot of really wonderful donations from our community members and different partners, so, and I'd like to appreciate them for their generous donation.
So what happens with the twenty thousand dollars that got donated to Rancho Katari because of the amazing teacher, is that?
It's for the school's use.
Yep, so will the principal and, and hopefully the teacher get some input in what happens?
Yes, I believe so, I will double check.
Okay.
Jessica Holman actually asked that it get deposited to their ASB account, so that's what we did.
Oh, cool. Great.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve twelve X. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thirteen reports-
Actually, I do have a question about that.
Okay.
The, the ten thousand dollar donation that, to the Rancho Katari High School Library, that's a single person's donation?
I believe so.
Okay, well.
It was a, it was a gift upon death of a, of a-
Anyone remember?
Yeah, you know, someone, I'm sorry.
Who was part of their estate?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, that's a vast contribution. Literally.
Thirteen A, board member reports and future agenda items, Mark?
Well, I, I don't think publicly I congratulated Mrs. Holman for that, that award, so, I mean, that, that's just great that she's getting that recognition, Jessica Holman for that. I did, I was not able to attend the, the WASC Goals for Rancho Katari for the second session, but I was very much, I liked when I saw the- I liked what I saw, the, everybody coming together in the first session and then the reports for the second session. So I hope to be able to make the next one for that. And, you know, the football season's going, the sports are kicking in. So it's, it's just great to see everything, you know, getting more back, closer to, to normal, the, the extracurriculars and, and the way that the kids are, are participating and, you know, even, I liked how Mr. Messis said they're, they're remembering how to act socially and, and be, you know, comport themselves at school. So I know it's a, it's an experience in our house, so I'm just grateful that we're getting back to that. So I think that's all.
Michelle?
No, I think it's been a great year, start to the year. So the handful of teachers that I've talked to or the school sites that I've been on for various different reasons, like you said, it's looking more normal or whatever our new normal is. And you see people smiling and having a good time and students, the couple of principals I've talked to said they have a great group of students this year. So that's amazing that I think that everyone's happy and we're moving forward. So that's great. I look forward to getting out over the next month or two into classrooms and talking to people and seeing what's going on in the schools. And I just wanted to let Dr. Perez and Joe know, but I will not be at the October 18th board meeting. So I have a scheduling conflict that day. So just carry on and do be proud while I'm gone on the 18th, and that's it.
Sounds good. I am too very excited about the school year. It really, you know, I dropped off my daughter and my son the first day of school, but it really hit me when they did the ice cream social at my daughter's school. Just, you know, everyone seemed to be like smiling from ear to ear, teachers, students, just, I, you know, known, not, I don't really know Ms. Hankerson, but I've been a part of the school, because my kids go there, since she's been there. And seeing her smile and be super excited about things just makes me want to do stuff, have my kids school like we used to do, you know? A lot of community stuff. And I hope that this year is a year of community. And, you know, there's more community building at the school sites. So I can't wait to be a part of that. Beth?
So round two for the Brown family, with a new student in the district. And I'm looking at this Common Core math book for kindergartners. And I was having difficulty with it. You know, I can remember we had difficulty with calculus and trig and that kind of stuff. So a different way of learning. So I guess I just have to readjust my, my process and, you know, get out of the dark ages from the, you know, for math or stuff. No, exciting year, lots of good stuff happening. I hope to start attending a few more things now that I've weathered the COVID bout. So we'll go forward and, and things are good.
I'm glad you weathered your COVID bout too.
Yeah.
My granddaughter is over at HAN and she is just over the moon about her teacher and being back at school and very excited. They all caught COVID in June, so hopefully that's it for them. And I want to wish President Chimino a happy birthday next week. I hope you have a great one. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
So we've been busy learning together. We have, the Ed Services and myself attended a professional development in the area of professional learning communities. And that was really a powerful day with a retired superintendent from Sanger who told the story of taking care of all students and providing those scaffolds. It was a really, a really good day. Then I had the privilege of being at the Petaluma Mobile Clinic Ribbon Cutting. So it was a beautiful facility. There's two dental chairs and exam rooms, so we can bring services to the schools. So this is a really wonderful thing for our families at John Reed and where the need is. So they will, the clinic will travel to different schools, but it's really nice not to have to find a classroom. We have, you know, this beautiful vehicle with all that equipment inside to help our families. CAPS Network, again, professional learning communities, all principals attended. And the presenter was very inspirational, Dr. Luis Cruz. And we talked about PLCs and PLTs, professional learning teams. I've also been out at sites. I've had the pleasure of visiting Rancho Katari High School, UELF, Manavista, Technology High, and HAN. All wonderful visits, talking about instruction and what the focus is for this year and how we're implementing PLCs. We had our first superintendent's council with our new CELPA director. And the last couple of days, we've had Simon Silva, who is an artist, an author, and a speaker, presenting at John Reed. So last night was a really motivational evening about the importance of the arts. And it was really, really a great evening about how when we structure and do the directed art, sometimes we lose our creativity. So, and this morning I practiced a little bit of my art. So we had a work, art workshop with Simon Silva. Anyway, and if you ever come visit my office, his artwork is in my office. It's outstanding. He talks about his evolving art. What's really compelling about him as he talks about story about being a migrant farm worker and not doing well in school because he was throughout the states and, and not having a set home and kind of the difficulties at, at home, his home life. And yet he's this amazing, amazing person. The other thing that's kind of exciting is I'm part, there's a partnership blooming with SSU. We've always had a partnership. The Benedict Silverman Foundation is interested in sending tutors to come work with kids. So this is something, kind of a dream of mine, because oftentimes we're tired about, you know, teachers are tired at the end of the day. But then we have a crew that comes in, they're learning, reading strategies. They have to go through a training through the foundation. It's all free of charge. And then they take a one-unit course at Sonoma State, and then they come and serve our kids. So this is kind of an exciting opportunity. I'm still learning about it, but I think it'll be really good. And we'll, we'll find a, we'll find a school, we'll find a student, and it's just extra extending that, that learning time for our kids. So that's some of the, the work, the inner workings are happening, happening these past few weeks.